Let's call this to order again. I apologize. I usually try and respect people's time and I failed miserably.
You're forgiven.
You're entitled.
Thank you.
Call it to order, Andy.
I'm sorry, John?
Call it to order.
Call it to order. And call this regular meeting of the Roxbury Board of Finance to order. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I motioned to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, American Rescue Plan money. I would say that either Barbara or Sarah should go first here. Welcome, Sarah. I'm glad you're here.
Sarah. You know.
Oh, there you are.
Yikes. What happened?
Here we go.
Go ahead, Barbara, and then I'll fill in or whatever you.
I had called, you know, to let you know again that the board of finance was looking for some numbers because we are trying to move closer to finalizing this list of where we're headed. And so you can take it from there because you had, you know, we had numbers from before. I don't know if you all have met again and, you know, can just shed some light on where we are.
Well, the last where we last left off, I wasn't able to be at the last finance meeting because that was the night of our ambulance meeting. And I was expecting to hear from you as to whether or not we were going to have a opinion as to whether the funds could be used for the firehouse. And then I read the minutes and saw that that is a feasible possibility. However, I don't think it makes sense for us to put the money there because it turns the job into prevailing wage, which like triples the cost. And so having a little bit of startup money isn't necessarily a good thing if it means that the entire project is astronomical and beyond the reach.
But it is going to be prevailing wage.
But Kim, I thought I understood from you that it had to be prevailing wage, no matter who paid for it.
That's my understanding.
And I thought that we were going to get an opinion because they're supposed to be something to do with the square footage of the addition is not X percentage of the current building. And if we have all the cash up front, et cetera, et cetera. I thought that we were going to talk to Gail or someone else to see if that was the feasibility. That's where we left off.
I guess I didn't realize that, Kim, you were not at their meeting.
No, Kim was with you.
No, I didn't go to their meeting. I don't go to the building committee meetings. But I but I had said, Sarah, I know I sent you the thing from the Department of Labor about the additions to the public, public infrastructure. So.
But I think that that was, we're still up in the air regarding the percentage of the addition, are we not?
Well, my understanding from speaking to the woman at the Department of Labor was that, in her opinion, it was, it is not new construction. You're adding on to an existing building. So it's considered a renovation and therefore the threshold for prevailing wage on a renovation is $100,000. So. I was hoping that I know it's new construction. I was kind of under that impression as well, but but she said, no, no, no. An existing building and.
And that's. Our builder told us that if our, one of our contractors told us that if it's a certain percentage, square footage wise versus the current building, and we had the cash up front, that it would not be prevailing wage. So we're going to have to figure that out because neither neither department wants, neither the fire department nor the ambulance wants to have to put out a whole bunch of cash if if there's a way for us to do it affordably. And that's where we left off. And I I was not at last month's finance meeting and I Barbara, I did get your call today at 3:30, but that's the first like I knew that it was back on my lap.
Okay. My question is, what does it take to get this off the mark? Because I feel like I've been in this meeting 10 times now. And what does it take? What's the process? Because like, we're not going to fix this here tonight, obviously. What do we? What's the process we're going to use to get this? To get this moving? Because I, as I said, I feel like we're, we've been spinning our wheels for two months now.
I agree. So what is our hard deadline, Kim or Barbara? When do we need to have a plan in place?
So we have to report a plan by October 31st, and it encompasses the award date of June 4th and the end of the quarter, which is September 30th. So we have a little bit of room, a little bit of time left to get all of that taken care of, I think, in my opinion.
So the uncertainty that we have right now has to do with prevailing wage on the firehouse. Kim, you're pretty certain.
It's not uncertain.
Yeah. And Barbara, you're dead certain. I have to.
That hasn't, you know, no one, I didn't get a call from Barbara until 3 o'clock today. So I can't give you guys any information. And I'm not so sure that the department, it was, why would the ambulance want to have to, so we take this money, say it's 400,000. So now we're going to have to come up with another 800,000 of our own money. Like, if the town is going to do it and it's going to be this kind of thing, then let the town do it. Like, we were trying to raise the cash and avoid the the possibility of a big tax increase or a burden on the taxpayers. And, you know, the ambulance isn't going to take every one of our pennies and put it towards this building that, you know.
So I'm gonna move that we do a plan to put the money into the culverts like we talked about last time and make that our priority.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's have some discussion then. Nanette, what's, what's your thinking on this?
My thinking is that our responsibility now is to come up with a plan. I know that I know that we want the firehouse to be our first priority, but I feel like we've now given this two months to try to get this off the dime and we're exactly where we were when we started. I don't see anything moving in the direction of getting this resolved. In fact, I feel like we're moving further and further apart. And so I, I would like us to, to, you know, I mean, I don't know how much of the board of finance we want to put in sitting here spinning our wheels. And so I would say we have a sure thing that we know the town needs and that we should move to move in that direction. I don't, I know we don't know exactly how much, but it does seem that many other towns are going in this direction with culverts. As I said, we know, we know there's a need. And I just think we should, we should move ahead. You know, I think we've spent enough time on this, so I think we should move ahead.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
I was just gonna jump back. I was just gonna jump back. This is so, does everybody else have the freeze going on with this?
Yeah, Mike, I don't know what's going on with mine, but it's
okay.
Looks like.
But Kim, your conversation with Mike also about how that money was going to go over if if they choose to fund the firehouse, how that had to happen. Was that explained also to Sarah?
No.
And then Sarah, we did talk previously about that there were plans that the person that drew up the plans would possibly come up with a bid document. And that, but it was the dollar amount that we were trying to figure out where was this landing? Was it going to stay around the 600,000? Or? And then where was the capital campaign? Because I know that you were going to get a letter out. So and that that got sidetracked, but.
The dollar amount is based on straight wages, not prevailing wages, and it was close to $680,000. You do prevailing wage, that's going to triple it. So getting 400,000 out of this isn't gonna help that the ambulance isn't gonna fit the rest of the bill.
Sarah, where you get that triple?
Right, got the triple.
Well, because the, because you have to pay so much more in the benefits in the the amount of what it costs, it really does become cost prohibitive. And I'm not, I don't think it's a responsible thing for the association to do to put all of that money in there at that point when it's now become a huge, huge project. And that, you know, fire department and the ambulance were trying to work together to figure it out. They were going to do things like pave the driveway out of their budget, you know, they just did the roof. There are things that we're trying to do to save the taxpayer money, but the builders that I spoke with gave me different information than what Kim got. And so that's where we stand. And the capital campaign is ready to go. The letter is ready to go, but I'm not going to necessarily send out a capital campaign if this isn't gonna, you know, this is a big question mark and up in the air and I don't want to be misguiding the public by saying, you know, we're trying to raise money for something that either we are or aren't going to move forward with with the town and, you know, so that doesn't make any sense either.
Is it, is it? Andy, it's Paul. Can I just jump in?
Please, please.
And forgive me, you know, I I've missed a lot of meetings over the summer and I I regret that. But I'm back now. I'm just, and I I'm going to be an asshole. It seems to me and to Nanette's point, have we had communication issues here? I mean, it seems to me like people aren't talking to each other and we're, we're at this point now where there are a lot of like, well, why don't we have answers?
Well, that's a fair question, I think, Paul. Part of me is thinking that, you know, if we're looking at comparing the firehouse and the culverts as two big projects that the town needs to address, there's going to be a total sum of money. Say it's, let's say a million and a half dollars, whatever it is that. Does it really matter from an overall financial perspective, which one we put this federal money towards? Because either way, it's going to reduce the town's contribution to the the sum of those two projects.
I would, it's Patrick, Andy, if you don't mind. I, I, just because of the the feeling that I'm getting from this, and I, and I, and I understand your point, Nanette, that we've wasted some time, but it it feels like people are still coming into the loop and I would feel impelled to, you know, give the firehouse and ambulance an opportunity to maybe do some research and get some better answers before we jump away because it doesn't feel like they've had the opportunity to prepare.
I don't disagree with that.
But I guess my question is, what's what's standing in the way of their ability to prepare?
I think we.
Well, now.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I mean, now, if Sarah could go back and get a ballpark figure from from whomever you had spoken to before, and they know that it's prevailing wage, they would be able to give you that number. Because if they were going to answer a bid, they would have to provide that.
I will pursue that. I will, I will get a figure based on the updated costs after COVID along with the prevailing wage. I, I, I will do that. I was not, you know, made aware of anything that happened last during last month's, last week's meeting. So I, I honestly thought we were at different places than we're at.
Yeah, no one's, no one's holding you at fault here, Sarah. I think that you didn't have the information. Please don't think that anyone is.
Yeah, exactly. No, 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 nobody's casting blind, but I just think we we need to get better at communicating on these points. That's all.
Okay.
Andy, can I say something?
Please, Sean.
The gating factor here is prevailing wage. Can we get a definitive answer that everybody agrees to the town, ambulance and fire? That what is the situation with that? Do we or don't we have to do prevailing wage on this project? Seems to be the issue.
So let me, this is Kim Baron. Let me answer that. So Sarah, I did send you that in, that's information some time ago from the Department of Labor and and the woman, I'll give you her name, that I spoke to who told me absolutely it had to be prevailing wage. And and if the, the gentleman, the the contractors, the architects, whomever, if they need to speak to them, they can. If there's some caveat to all of it, she was pretty, when I spoke to her, she was pretty black and white about it. It's a renovation, has to be prevailing wage. So if there's some other way to get out of that, somebody's going to have to talk to the Department of Labor.
Well, it's also federal dollars and you're looking at Davis Bacon, which is another thing that they can, they can throw on top of that. So.
Well, Barbara, pardon me, but I think what I hear Sarah saying is that that's the question, which is if there are no federal dollars involved, Sarah, I don't want to speak for you, but that's what I'm hearing. If the federal dollars are not involved, then does it have to be Davis Bacon and prevailing wage? Because the question is, can we do it cheaper if we don't have federal dollars? Am I hearing you right, Sarah?
That's my understanding. I may be completely wrong and I will place a call to the Department of Labor, but but that's what our builders have said. If I don't take a dime of money from the federal government, if I don't have the town bond it, if we don't have any town funds, if it's all nonprofit funds, cash upfront, no loan, no mortgage, no nothing, based on the square footage of what we were proposing, that we would be able to do it much more cost effectively.
Sarah, the contractors that you were speaking with understand that this is a town owned building and.
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
Okay.
And and then the designer, the architect has done, has advised me of that as well, and he's done other renovations for other fire departments.
Okay, well, I hope you're right.
And that's where I thought we were at, like that we were going to get an opinion from a legal standpoint. So.
Okay, so if, as we understand this, if we can't take any federal dollars to do this firehouse, then we should just, to Nanette's point, take it off the table.
Yeah.
Put it where it can be used otherwise.
In this case, the ARPA money, if if a portion of it goes, you have to do the Davis Bacon. It would, Davis Bacon would be waived if the whole project were being funded by ARPA funding. There, there is a waiver for that. But but that's not.
Not doing that.
So it's not going to be the case here. So.
Okay, so.
So we.
It sounds like that if we apply any of this ARPA money to the firehouse, then prevailing wage definitely applies, whether or not the state would say so in any event.
Right, correct.
So let's move on. Let's talk about culverts. That's my take on it. I think that we should we're not going to harm the fire department by not dedicating any of this money to the new firehouse project.
Andy, before we do that, can I ask Sarah a clarifying question? You're saying you couldn't take town money either, though. Is that right?
I was, the way it was explained to me, based on the square footage of the renovation we were doing, we had, we had considered getting a mortgage. We considered the town bonding it for us. We considered the town doing it. Any one of those three things would would cause it to be prevailing wage. If we had cash upfront in our account to pay for it as a nonprofit, then we would be in the clear based on the, on the.
Okay.
So you guys moving forward on the culvert makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
So what's the sense of the board on this then?
Send some money out some culverts.
I think the state's nuts. That's my feeling.
Well, that almost goes without saying, but how do you feel about culverts, Ed?
I agree with the feeling of the board that that would make the most sense, absolutely.
Yeah, Paul? Paul seems to be absent. Um. Okay. If we go this route, Barbara, how much money do you think we should allocate towards that?
All of it. And I mean, that's, what we should do is work backwards now. For the things that we did say we would like to purchase for the ambulance and for the broadband. You know, we do have something, we do have a cost for the senior center, not the Hodge or anything else, but then there would also be the senior center, the senior learning network would be thrown into that. The health department, we were looking at possibly two computers. That's not a big thing. And then the three smaller amounts for the friends of the senior center, friends of the Roxbury Library and chore service. So and and we could, we could forget about all of those, the friends, you know, the two friends and the tour service, but we just work backwards and whatever we got, because we'll use it all for two culverts.
You guys had mentioned it prior meetings, you know, thinking that the fire department, based on their loss of Picken and Fiddlin, that that was on the table, and I didn't see that in any of the last month's minutes.
So let's kind of, that's a good point, Sarah. So let's reverse engineer this. How much money were we looking at for these smaller projects? And let's see what we have left over.
Okay, but just to address the, I did speak with the fire chief and asked you know, what could we possibly do for the fire department? He said there was nothing.
But we did get the number of 15,000. I don't have it in front of me, Andy, but when it was roughly 15,000, right?
Yep.
Or what?
The loss, the loss from picking. That we would just be making up the loss of revenue. It doesn't have to be for something specific.
That's one of the things that we can do with that money, as I understand it. And that doesn't burden the fire department with any federal obligations. How do how do we feel about that one in general?
I would agree that it's a direct loss.
Me too.
Yep. I agree.
I, I agree.
Well, and and Kim, you can speak to the fact that the algorithm and the algebra and all that went into this is actually a positive for Roxbury because you know, we, we govern ourselves locally, not by the county, not by the state, and it seems to me that the loss of revenue and the algorithm is in favor. It is much more of a plus sign for us.
That's it.
It is. Correct, correct.
Barbara or Kim, could you run down the amounts that we had talked about at the last meeting for senior center or so on and so forth? See if we can come up with a total sum?
Yeah, I, I came up with.
Kim, are you okay? You seem to be under the desk.
No, I know. I'm, I'm reaching down for my holder here. I don't, I don't have that list in front of me that I sent to you all. But as I recall, we had about.
It's 45,000 for the durable medical equipment.
Right.
Um, it was going to, we were going to, the broadband came in at like 34,000, but we, we wanted to pad that and add the senior learning network program. So you'd be looking at like 50 or 55. The health department, two desktop computers is like 1,500. And then it just depends if you wanted to go for, you know, $5,000 for the land trust bridge. And then the friends, you know, five, $6,000 apiece for the friends of the senior center, library and chore service.
Okay, let's.
I had it, I had it in general.
Right.
In general dollars, from what I sent you, it was a little bit more general than that. It was 365,000 going to the firehouse renovation, 96,000 for broadband infrastructure, $100,000 for the stormwater. That would be the infrastructure, that would be the culverts. And 75,000 for supporting the public health response, which included the health district, the medical, the the money for the ambulance association for the AEDs and the stretcher and supporting the local nonprofits.
I think, I'm just looking at this thing you sent us, Kim. I think last time we talked about adding Greenwoods.
That's fallen under one of her categories.
Right, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so. What is Greenwoods?
Mental health and addiction services.
Oh, okay, great. Sorry.
So what's, there were three items towards the end that felt like we hadn't discussed them well enough. One was the land trust bridge. And I think the other was chore. And there was the third one, and I cannot remember what it is.
The Chapag River Alliance?
Right.
Right. So let's get a sense of what people think about the donating $5,000 to the land trust for the new bridge.
I'm in favor. Big time.
I am as well.
I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion.
I would be in favor, Andy.
Nanette?
Sure.
Um, I have to recuse myself from that as well. Okay, what about chore? Barbara has explained what this is. Do we, maybe you could do a quick explanation again, Barbara?
It is, it's actually a great little organization with some of the, some of the Northwest towns that participate for, it's helping seniors who need one-on-one help as far as, you know, shopping or housework or, you know, transportation, those kinds of things. But then they hire people in these towns to, to do those. And they, and they get paid like $15 an hour. So it helps two people at once. Roxbury does take advantage of it, and it has helped people who are looking for work as well as people who are looking for workers. Now, the woman who's run this just died on it quite unexpectedly and they're gonna have to hire someone else to take over, you know, vetting people, et cetera. But it's a, but it's a good thing. But it's, but it's a good thing. And. Actually, Geraldine, you know, works with some of these people also.
What's our sense about this? Five thousand?
Yeah, no, no more than that. Yep.
And, and Barbara, there are a number of recipients. Well, I think that's fantastic. I say yes.
As would I.
Yeah, I'm good with that, okay. And the Chapag River Alliance. Apparently, there have been some issues again with Waterbury. Taking more than their share of the Chapag. You all right there, Paul?
Yeah. I just dropped my phone.
And there we have been, Barbara, could you explain this one?
Well, the Chapag River Association has actually. Edwin Matthews, who heads up this whole group, which is the Roxbury Land Trust. The town of Roxbury, the town of Washington, Steep Rock and the Chapag River Association. They went out and hired someone to do some assessments, et cetera, and then they just send us the bill. Bless you, Paul. And.
All right, thank you.
We said that we, we were, we argued about paying without even knowing that they hired these people. However, it is something that over twenty, twenty years ago. We went to battle with against the city of Waterbury. You know, went to the legislature, et cetera, for them to release this water because they were diverting it and the river was drying up. So now it's like, wait a minute, we're starting to see that this is raising its ugly head again. We should give some money. I see Washington is giving some money towards this. Instead of us getting billed. Russ Dorenzo is actually gonna, is stepping up to see if he could take over in just speaking with some of the people there and not being charged. But they do need some money in their coffers. It is a worthwhile cause. It's one of the biggest natural resources we have running through our town.
Oh, for sure. My goodness.
What's the suggested amount?
Five, again. I know they would like ten, but. But I think five is. A good number. That's me personally.
I'm so sorry. What are the other towns doing, Barbara?
Yeah, I, Washington is actually, I think, giving ten.
I'm sorry. I just wanna like, make sure you all know I'm back.
What's the sense of the board on this?
I've recused myself from this.
Okay. Nanette, you seem to be frozen.
Oh, no. I wouldn't do more than five.
Okay.
I'd be in agreement with five as well. It seems like we're gonna be paying for it either way. So allocating some funds seems like the generous thing to do overall.
Not knowing much about this, I'm gonna defer to Barbara's judgment, and I will, I agree also. I think it's a worthy, absolutely a worthy cause.
I would agree with that. And finally, the one other thing I'd like to bring up. Kind of working backwards so we can.
I haven't figured this out, Nanette. I apologize. I just, I have no clue. I'm so sorry.
Julie, is all this making it into the minutes?
We're leaving the sneezes out.
So. Last week, Jim Conway brought up a suggestion of. Using some of this money for relief for local businesses. And. I just wanna bring it up again to make sure that we've discussed it and get the sense of the board, because it's not on the list. What do we think?
I'm so sorry. Okay. I put myself on mute. I need to mute myself. So sorry.
The upper right-hand corner.
So, and just to speak to that point, I guess I'll start off. I think it's a tough determination because so many different businesses were affected in different ways. And we have, you know, we do have some retail business, but we also have that same impact from people working out of their homes as well. And it's a tough delineation unless there, it was clarified in a better way of helping specific ones. But I think there would need to be more clarification because may just start some animosity or how come one person and not another.
That's a great point, Patrick.
I agree. I think it's too hard.
It would take too much to administer. And ruffle, ruffle a few feathers. I wouldn't be in favor of it myself.
It really does feel like a can of worms to me.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll table that. So the number that I come up with that we've discussed tonight, we've got sixty. Hundred and fifteen. Hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty. Hundred and thirty-one. Five is what I come up with, all of these smaller. Amounts adding up to. Somebody wanna check my math?
Did you put Greenwoods in there?
We haven't talked about, we haven't added a number for Friends of Library, Friends of Senior Center or Greenwoods on my list.
All right, let's keep going. Okay, Friends of the Library.
I gotta mute myself.
What did we propose on Friends of the Library last time? Kim, do you remember? No? Okay. Opening bid is ten thousand dollars.
Seems a little high to me, but, okay, let's go.
Can I just make a comment, Andy? Why in the hell do we not? Plow the parking lot and all of that at the library? What's the problem?
It's a fair question. There's a lot of history between the town and the library and who's.
I gather there is, and we support the library, we support the town, but. It just seems to me petty and stupid.
I'm not sure we can do it with this money.
No, it's, it's kind of outside.
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with this money. It's another.
It's a budget issue. Let's deal with the next budget.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the cosmetic issue, it's, I think that the historic district would weigh in on that.
So Barbara, have we had any kind of a number for the Friends of the Library?
No, but when I started thinking about those two friends groups, I was thinking six each.
Yeah, we had two meetings ago, we had five for each. There was five for the Land Trust, senior friends, and then five for Chapag. That's what we had had at one meeting anyway. I believe it was two meetings ago.
That's what I'm remembering too, Patrick.
Yeah, I have it. Well, I have it back in my notes. I just, I haven't organized it to the date, but, or which one I started at, but we had originally had five. What, I, I guess, Barbara, you would may know because it was, it was started with this. What would they use the funds for? Like the Friends of the Library or the Friends of Senior Center? What would they be using those funds for?
Well, both of them, they are. Required to put their funds either towards the library to help fund the library budget or the town budget, the senior center budget. That's what, that's what they have to do with their, their fundraising.
And they need to demonstrate the negative impact of COVID on their fundraising, you know, for, like any nonprofit.
Honey, I'm sorry, but I'm just not ready. But you go ahead. You eat if you want.
Oh, you're not on mute.
Sorry.
You need to go away more often.
So, five thousand seems like a reasonable number and it.
Right, I'm, I'm sure all of these organizations can make the case that they have not been able to, to raise a certain amount. That, that you are all proposing.
So, so, Kim, does this apply to all of, I mean, if it applies to the friends? Then the same issue has to apply to Greenwood and to the, to all the nonprofits? So they're all gonna have to demonstrate to us, Chapag and the land trust?
Yeah, they'll be, they, they should be able to demonstrate loss of revenue or the impact, you know, their ability to fundraise. All of these organizations fundraise. They, they, they have various ways they fundraise, you know. Programs. You know, fundraisers, you know, with people gathering and all of that, and that, that did not happen, obviously, during COVID. So, so that negatively impacts their ability to fundraise.
No, I, I get that, but I, all I'm saying is that it's not just these two. It's gonna be all of the organizations.
Right.
All of the nonprofits are gonna have to answer this question.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. It's kind of the same for everyone.
And Andy was picking Fiddlin on your, was, was the.
It is.
That's the.
On your list?
The fifteen K for the fire department. That's what that is.
They, they haven't been able to have picking.
For two years now.
Two years, so.
Which leaves us with Greenwoods. What do we wanna do about that?
If I may. It was. It was the approximate loss of fifteen thousand per year, if it's a good year, on picking and filling. We had two years, they had two years. So I don't know if you guys.
We can only do it for twenty twenty. Unfortunately.
Okay.
That's, I think, is that correct, Kim?
It, it's not totally correct, because I have to do some forecasting out through twenty twenty-three. So. So, yeah, it, it'll be, you know, we'll be able to give them some money this year, but then as we go, you know, it all goes towards. Well, this is the public health response. This is, these are nonprofits. So that is in the public health response category. Not the loss of revenue. The loss, the revenue loss is what I was really hoping we could. That, that formula would go towards the. Firehouse. So. So that is kind of non-existent at this point. So the other categories, the broadband. The sewer infrastructure and the public health response, the negative impact. All come under, the money going to the nonprofits is gonna come under the public health response. Not the, not the revenue laws.
Okay. So.
Why wouldn't it go under revenue loss?
Because it's revenue loss, the town's loss of revenue. It's, it's a complicated formula. It goes towards. Showing that revenue loss goes towards funding general services.
Okay.
And so general services means helping build the addition on at the firehouse and the need, and the need for it and all of that. Cause that is a service that the town provides. Emergency services.
And then. Are we, are we ready to move on to talking about Greenwoods?
Can I just ask a question of Sarah? Because I know she's very involved with the fire department. And I see that the Bridgewater firemen have not had their, the Bridgewater Fair, which is huge for two years now. But they, they also went and did other fundraisers, like they just had the big beer and wine fest, et cetera. Has this department talked about anything else to try and make that up if, if they go another year without it?
They are not anticipating going another year. They are going to vote next month as to whether or not they're going to start the planning for next summer. They are holding an open house in October to start to, you know, bring people back into the fold, et cetera. And go from there. You know, the Bridgewater Fair canceled their fair for two years in a row. Yes, they did just do the beer. But, you know, they also, there's too much planning that go into big events like that. The beer thing is easy to plan. You can't plan big.
I think they're having like a barbecue, you know, pickup thing that's coming.
Yeah, drive-through dinners. Yep. Yeah, I mean.
I was just wondering if they were talking about anything else.
Yeah, they're considering other things. Holly has her hand up, I think.
Go ahead, Holly, please. I can't hear you, Holly. I think you might be on mute.
Uh, how about now?
There you go.
Thank you. I had my wrong, wrong plug in. Back on August tenth, there was mention of police body cameras?
No, they, they, they don't qualify for this, I asked.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Barbara. Okay.
Thanks, Holly. Okay, are we good on the fire department? The, the fifteen K, is that still the number we want to work with?
I guess the, I guess the answer is, or the question is, it, so, I mean, with that all explanation, all we can compensate them is for the one year, so that's the most we can get. Okay, so in that case, I agree.
I thought Kim said you could do both years.
Can we clarify this? Kim, you're on mute.
Kim, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I was on mute. No, it is, it is what you want to give them. You know, they, they again, you know, wanna demonstrate over, and Sarah has articulated that again tonight. The loss of revenue over a period, you know, the last two years that they haven't had picking and filling, so. So it's either one or two years. It depends on what y'all wanna do about it.
I have no objection raising that to cover two years. I think, you know, the fire department. Survival of the town.
I would agree.
So we're going to change that number to thirty thousand? Back to Greenwoods.
Greenwoods, like I said, it's a. Alcohol and addiction, mental health service that does service the town of Roxbury. And through the COVID, there was absolutely a rise in addiction services and overdose deaths. Not in Roxbury, but in, in our area. So I have listened to some of the things that this, this company. This service gets into, and I, I think that it's absolutely a worthy cause, you know, for five thousand dollars.
I have no objection to that.
I agree.
Me too.
As do I.
So let me run down the overall list then. Fire department, we have thirty thousand. Durable medical devices. We have forty-five thousand.
Right.
I have a note here that says BB, and I have no idea what that means.
Broadband.
Broadband, there we go. Fifty-five thousand. Fifty-five thousand. Um, one point five for.
Health Department.
Health Department.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifty, yeah.
But the, and the, but the broadband is strictly for the senior center, not the Hodge.
Mm-hmm, right.
It's, but it's also a senior learning network as well.
Correct.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Um, sure, we've got five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Chappa River Association, five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Friends of the Library, five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Senior Center, five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Greenwood's, five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And.
You missed R. You, you got sure, but you missed RLT. The Roxbury Land Trust.
RLT, there we go. Yep, five thousand there. Okay.
I get one six, uh, one sixty-one, one sixty-one five, right?
Twenty, twenty-five, one thirty. Okay, there's my mistake. Yeah. Seventy-five. Eighty, one thirty.
What did you say? One, five, six, five?
One, six, one, five hundred.
Yeah, one, six, one, five.
I missed somebody here then.
Okay. Want me to go through the list again?
Oh, wait a minute, um.
The list.
Okay.
Yeah, one, six, one, five, right?
Right. Yep.
And what was the total amount we're getting? Because subtracting this one, six, one, five from that total amount would give us what we have for culverts.
Six, six thirty-six.
Six thirty-six. We've got four seventy-four, five for culverts.
Yep. Four seventy-four, five.
Yep.
Seventy-four, five. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. To fund the culverts. Um, I would say this is the amount that we should add to that motion. One question that I have is, we still do have some time. We don't have to, um, we don't have to finish this tonight. We don't have to have this plan in place until October twenty-first, was it, Barbara?
Thirty-first, thirty. Over thirty-one.
So we have, we could prolong this agony.
It's not that bad.
And, uh,
It's okay. Cool, my health.
Andy?
Paul, are you, seriously? Wait a minute, hold on. For a minute, we got a couple of EMSs on this call. Paul, are you all right? Seriously?
Paul?
Paul?
I think DDA is with him.
I think he stepped away. Right.
Yeah.
I, I would, um, move to table my motion.
I think that's wise. Um, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
But I feel like this is kind of just cautionary in case something, we've missed something.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to see this motion voted on, um, at our next regular meeting, um, early as possible. Is there more we want to cover as far as the ARPA funding? Or, um, I think we're there. I think we've got a plan and I don't want to spin our wheels any more than we already have.
It's good. I, this is Kim Baron. I, I would like you to vote on that motion that I sent you, Andy, sent the board about establishing the fund.
Yes.
Tonight.
Would someone care to make that motion using Kim's language?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I, I need the language.
Okay. Um, Kim, do you have that in front of you? Can you read that to us?
Kim, you're on mute.
You're mute, Kim. You're still mute.
I, I'm going to bring it up in one second.
Okay. Yep, here it is. I found it.
So the, so the BOF would have to make a motion to establish the ARPA slash fiscal recovery funds as a special revenue fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. I believe I had sent all of you after the last meeting, um, my, uh, discussions with, uh, Rico, the auditor, about this. And we agreed that we should establish this special revenue fund.
Okay. Um, who, who made the, uh, motion?
Ed.
Um, do you agree with that language?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, no, it's okay. Um, all right, then, uh, shall we vote on this? Any discussion?
I guess I have to second, somebody has to second it first also, right?
Right, I thought someone had seconded it, but go ahead.
Got it. I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, um, then I think we can move on to the selectman's report. Barbara? You're on mute. There you go. Now you're not.
Yep, yep. No, I was just calling to see if Paul was okay. He's okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Um.
Thanks, Barbara.
What did you ask me?
Um, did you have anything to add by way of a selectman's report?
No, because, um, I thought I was going to have a solid cost for two of the culverts. And, uh, I was supposed to meet today with one of the engineers. And he's, um, asking me if he could meet on Friday instead. Because the amounts that, um, he came up with, and I'm talking about the culverts on Squire and Painter Hill. They were just astronomical. And, uh, he's looking for a, um, a type of culvert that I think is just outrageous. So I said, can we just look at the option of one culvert, solid culvert in each one, but even a larger size? And, uh, that's what he's getting back to me on. So I'm, I'm hoping to move in on that. It would be really great if we could get these two things finished. Uh, we could go for a grant. It would take a lot of time and both of these really, can't wait.
Yeah, and we're talking.
We have money in the Town Aid Road also to, to help with these. But this would be, this would go a long way.
We're just talking box culverts here, right?
Right, but I'm looking at another option, which would just be the, a larger, much larger, just round, single culvert. Right now, they have doubles in them.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay. Um, if that's all you've got, is there anything else that the board wishes to discuss?
I just have a quick request, Andy.
Please.
Um, it, it seems to me with some, so many of these big ticket items coming up that we may well need to go back to the issue of bonding.
Yes.
And, um, I don't know about the other members of the board, but I would like, um, some, either reading or a, uh, or a speaker to come in or something just to prepare us with the basic information about, um, having the town, um, go back to doing some bonding. So I don't know the best way to arrange that, but, and it may be just be for people who wanted to have, have somebody come in and meet with us. But I'd like to get started on that.
It's a great idea. Um, Julie, can you make a note to add that, I think, to the November, uh, agenda? Uh, because we're still going to be discussing ARPA in October.
Hmm.
And, uh, uh, I think it makes sense to move that to November, but I like the idea very much. And, um, Barbara or Kim, if you have anybody you could suggest to fill that role, we would much appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it's time to do that, actually.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't done it in a long, not in my, not in my term.
Right.
Yeah, no, we've never bonded anything that time I've been on the Board of Finance, so.
No.
Barbara, I would suggest we, uh, contact Barry Bernardi, Bernardi at Municipal Advisors. Um, he used to be, uh, when we, when our banking relationship was with Webster, he was part of government finance then, and then has gone out. And his company does consulting work with, uh, bonding and such.
Can you send me his contact information?
Sure, sure. Sure.
Okay, that's a great idea. Um, anything else? Well then, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, well, I guess, I'm, I guess I could say that, um, we're, the roof on the Public Works Garage, that's going to start because, um, the roofing material has come in. And then we were also, we put out the painting of the senior center and that will begin by the end of the month also. Which we've put money aside for both of those in our capital improvement.
Is that the exterior or the interior?
Of the senior center exterior. Senior, the interior is done.
Okay. Okay. Um, the only other thing of interest, uh, Patrick's well aware of this too, is that ONG plans to start work on the new bridge for the Land Trust on Monday.
Yay.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
So a couple of us are going over to, uh, to work on, uh, bridge decking sections tomorrow night. And, uh, so we'll be having fun making sawdust.
Yep.
That's great. That's great. I see you guys were, uh, at least Patrick, you were out there with a bunch of people. So do you have all the wood and everything or what's, what's going on with that? And, and the fundraising for it?
Yeah, if you don't mind me talking about it, the, all the wood came from trees from previous storms that had fallen on Land Trust property. Uh, and then we milled them all ourselves. So it's like this massive, like, two and a quarter inch thick oak.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's what we were playing in down. And then there are big steel frames. And actually, the whole frame itself uh, of this steel bridge is all, uh, it was an old cat, catwalk. It's all reclaimed, uh, steel. So all they got to really do is put these footings on either side and we're going to lower this. And then we'll have these oak, uh, sections, uh, of walkway that are in it. Uh, very excited and it's going to happen this year.
That's great.
Yeah, it's going to be cool.
Yep, Andy's been a great help. Thank you, Andy.
Well, my pleasure. Okay, if that's it, then, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? There never is. Okay. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you. Yep.
Good meeting. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.